Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Saginaw City Council. We're going to open the meeting tonight a little differently. We have Kevin Washburn from the Saginaw Coral Society to sing the first verse of "America the Beautiful." Kevin?
(Singing) For beautiful, spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesty above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed His grace on thee, and crown thy wood with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea.[84.11][84.11](Applause).
Thank you very much. Now, we will ask our Councilman John Millen to lead us in a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
For those who'd like to join, thank you Heavenly Father for watching over all in the city of Saginaw. Protect our first responders, comfort those in grief at the recent events in the city, and help guide us in our deliberations this evening. For that, we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Councilmember Millen.
Here.
Councilmember Tibbs. Councilmember Bench. Mayor Pro Tem Clock.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Humphreys.
Here.
Mayor Browning is excused. We have eight members present and one excused.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We would ask the members of the audience to be courteous, remain quiet, and refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, or rude or obnoxious behavior during the course of the meeting. At this time, it being appropriate, we would ask that everybody either turn off or silence all your electronic devices. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. I have an announcement tonight. I'd like everyone to be aware that on the agenda, we had to make an adjustment under resolutions. It would be the fourth one. The address should be 118 North Michigan rather than E for the east. And also, the public hearing notice regarding the urban cooperation agreement, which is for Spalding Township, that has been revised and it was placed at your seats. The revision on that public hearing notice is to state that it's agreement for inspection services rather than water services with Spalding Township. And with that, that takes us to the public hearings.
Ladies and gentlemen, the purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive comments for consideration when action may be taken. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the hearing. Please begin by stating your name. The main presenter or designated representative will be allowed 15 minutes to speak. Other speakers will be limited to five minutes. Speakers may ask general questions but shall not ask questions of individual council members, city staff, or the audience, and the public hearing is not a question-and-answer session. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Our first public hearing is for the 2018 Single Lot Special Assessment Tax Rule.
We would ask for any public comments. Is there anyone speaking towards this special lot tax rule at this time? Anyone speaking? Oh, I'm sorry. Here we have somebody.
Hi. My name is Sabrina Hines and I stay at 217 North Webster. And I received a letter in the mail from my neighbors. My neighbor set out trash next door to me, and I received a bill for like $66. I didn't bring a letter with me. And I'm getting billed and I want to know how do I address this issue when it wasn't my trash that was put out there?
You will refer the matter to the city manager and we'll follow up with you.
So I'll be hearing from...
City management, yes.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak to the 2018 Single Lot Special Assessment Tax Rule? Yes, please, one of you step forward.
Hello, I'm Chantella Williams and I'm speaking on behalf of the House 1911 Cherry, and this has to do with the trash also. We were billed to pay for the trash, but it wasn't our trash. And so, we still got a bill for it and then they told us to appear here.
Again, we will refer the matter to the city manager and staff will get back with you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Artisha Goodwine. I brought my letter about the trash. Artisha Goodwine, 431 South 13th Street. I purchased the house from the auction. Before I put the trash out, I called the city trash to see how much to be put out. And they told me that I had put too much out, but I can fill the couch on the other side of the fence, but yet, they billed me $78.
Who talked earlier, if we don't have your address, please make sure we do. Anybody else to address the 2018 Single Lot Special Assessment Tax Rule? Is there anybody else to address the Special Assessment Tax Rule? For the third and final time, is there anybody else to address the Special Assessment Tax Rule? Hearing none? I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
(Inaudible).
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing is closed.
Second public hearing is for the 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant Program, the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and the Home Investment Partnership Program.
Is there anyone who wishes to address the 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant Program or Emergency Solutions Grant Program and/or the Home Investment Partnership Program?
Yeah.[482.81][482.81](Laughter). Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Ricardo Longoria and I live at 2527 Blackmore here in the city. The Human Planning Commission is here tonight to submit our proposals or recommendations for your approval. The Human Planning Commission's primary purpose is to provide constructive and effective citizen input in an advisory capacity to the city council. Commissioners serve the city of Saginaw by working to assist city council in solving community social and physical issues. The commission's goal is to ensure that community residents have an opportunity for self-development and to provide an opportunity for those who live in respective neighborhoods to identify challenges, issues, and priorities within their neighborhoods. The commission also seeks to understand and identify resolution for these concerns. In November of 2017, CDBG invited citizens and organizations to submit applications and proposals to be considered for fiscal year 2018-2019 funding cycle. The Human Planning Commission holds block grant interviews with applicants and then prepares recommendations for funding considerations annually. The recommendations are then submitted to you and city council. Each request is given serious consideration during the Human Planning Commission deliberations for CDBG, ESG, and home funds. The commissioners asked a lot of questions of the applicants and deliberated for many hours prior to making the following recommendations that are presented to council for consideration this evening. The total estimated CDBG funds available for the 2018-2019 cycle are $2,376,441 and an additional $139,806 for new activities. The request for total funds was $3,278,491. Top priorities for grant allocations were crime, supporting neighborhood communities, and helping youth and the homeless. The Human Planning Commission recognizes the importance of funding for basic needs to maintain the infrastructure of the city of Saginaw. Commissioners chose to continue to support programs that leverage every dollar awarded them to securing matching funds. Housing and rehab. The total amount considered for the entitlement funds for the 2018-2019 cycle was $463,392. The amount requested for housing and rehab programs was $664,760. The commission made an effort to keep this year's recommendations within the 2017-2018 appropriations. The Human Planning Commission recognizes the ongoing efforts of city council to assist the most vulnerable citizens in our community. Therefore, the recommendations for funding is as follows. specification writings at $129,011. Basic and residential loans and grants at $196,893. The CAC's elderly and disabled program at $137,488. We'll move on to public facilities. The Human Planning Commission is pleased with several agencies' ongoing commitment to upgrade and maintain their facilities. Four agencies were considered for funding for new and ongoing projects. Commissioners receive frequent feedback from residents about the need to improve the conditions on the streets for the city of Saginaw. There is a recognition that these funds for roads are inadequate to replace or repair the 296 miles of city streets within the city of Saginaw. Commissioners value the ongoing efforts of the city to maximize its existing funds through matching funds and pursuing the strategy of seeking additional funding when possible to support the infrastructure of the city. The commission recommends that the streets resourcing and reconstruction be funded at $188,484. The commission also is recommending that Hearts for the Community receive an allocation of $15,000 to build a pole barn to store equipment needed in maintaining the community park. Mission in the city will utilize $8,300 to continue beautification of community garden and fitness park. Restoration Community Outreach is receiving $30,000 for installation of an air conditioning Economic Development. The recommendation for demolition of dangerous buildings is increased to $414,470. Funds are to be used for commercial structures and residential structures that fall outside other grant awards. Saginaw Economic Development Corporation awards minimum amounts for corporate business loans. The recommendation for 2018-2019 is $123,872. Commissioners are recommending $345,000 for loan repayments. The commission further recommends funding of the Saginaw Downtown Development Association at $31,200, same as last year. Public Service. This allocation category has an estimated cap, 15 percent, of $324,096, and requests continuing for new, totaled $508,620, for an amount of $184,524 over the cap. The commission recommended funding for organizations that provide youth services, public safety, and neighborhood development. The Human Planning Commission recommends that Saginaw County Youth Protection Services and Teen Pregnancy Support be funded in the amount of $10,000 each. This agency consistently leverages annual block grant funding to gain matching dollars. The Human Planning Commission is recommending $128,966 for the Community Policing Program of Community Policing Crime Prevention in 2018-2019. Support for this program reflects the Human Planning Commission's priority for safe neighborhoods within the communities they represent and is in line with the priorities identified in the survey of city council and other governing groups, keeping in mind the shortfall of our 15 percent cap for public services. The commissioners work diligently to make the adjustments comply with HUD regulations. Also, parishioners on patrol will receive an allocated $8,800. The Human Planning Commission recommends the following allocations for currently funded agencies. $23,655 to First Ward Community Center Lacer. $17,601 for First Ward Community Center Higher. $4,887 to First Ward Community Center for their senior center. $26,460 to Horton Jones Neighborhood Task Force. $11,092 for Major Courts for Minors for grades three through 12. And $8,420 to Women of Colors to further programs for youth. Hearts for the Community has two grants. They have a summer youth camp and an after-school youth program. It is recommended that each service receive $5,000, which is the same as last year. Mission in the city received $1,700 for the summer youth camp. Commissioners awarded $5,000 to the Zion Evangelical Lutheran Church to help their boxing club grow. $8,615 for legal services of Eastern Michigan Fair Housing Testing and Education, which is mandated by HUD. The Human Planning Commission recommends $8,800 funding for housing counseling and $8,800 for home maintenance self-help that are administered through Saginaw Habitat for Humanity. The final ongoing program that was given consideration for funding is Big Brothers and Big Sisters One-to-One Mentoring in the amount of $9,500. The Human Planning Commission also considered four new programs under the public services category for funding, and they are the following. CAC's Literacy Plus One Program in the amount of $5,000. Jump Fresh Start Youth Program at $9,800. Major Court for Minors, pre-K, music, in the amount of $4,000. And Zion Evangelical Lutheran Church Senior Art Program at $3,000. Administration. The recommendation is to fund the block grant administration at $432,127, which is $24,100 less than the 2017-2018 allocations. Emergency Solutions Grant. Services to alleviate homelessness continues to be a community priority. The Emergency Solutions Grant is estimated to be $178,918 with a shelter cap of $109,844. The remaining dollars can be used for unpaid rehousing services or information management. The commission recommends funding Interlink at $29,297. Underground Railroad at $40,425. Restoration Community Outreach at $30,162. And Saginaw Catholic Mustard Seed Foundation at $9,960. All agencies provide very important service to different segments of the population. Continued funding of $16,948 is recommended for the ongoing support of the HMIS project out of the United Way of Saginaw, which tracks homelessness, emergency shelters, agencies, and complacency with HUD regulations, as well as $37,975,000 for the homeless prevention and $14,151 for rapid rehousing efforts through the United Way of Saginaw County. This year's projected limit for home funds is $303,515. The commission recommends awarding to ongoing and new programs that are the following. Community Housing Development Organization's operating expenses, CHODO, to Saginaw Habitat for Humanity in the amount of $15,000, as well as a rehabitat program in the amount of $145,500. The city of Saginaw has requested funding for a new tiny homes project in the amount of $143,015. The Human Planning Commission respectfully submits our recommended priorities for activities to continue to meet our community needs for the 2018-2019 grant years. The Human Planning Commission is a group of diverse citizens from the city of Saginaw who meet to recommend the best use of community development block grant funds for emergency shelter grant funds and the home funds, including community housing development organization funds. The commissioners appreciate the opportunity to serve our community and would like to thank the council persons that attended our sessions. We would also like to thank the city manager, the director of management and budget, and the block grant staff for their help and support. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the other Human Planning Commissioners that are here. I'll read the names, and if you would, please stand and remain standing until all the names are read. We have Commissioner Darlene Carpenter, Commissioner Anna Hidalgo, Commissioner Hazel Moore, Commissioner Bonnie Arns, myself, Ricardo Longoria, Commissioner Nathan Crawford, Commissioner Chris Travers, Commissioner Suzanne Smokowska, Commissioner Jim Wagner, Commissioner Elaine Cedar, Commissioner Leola Wilson, Commissioner Deborah Melkonian, and Commissioner Christopher White.[1291.12][1291.12](Applause). Thank you very much.
Anyone else to address the 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant Program, Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and/or the Home Investment Partnership Program? Step right up, please.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Clock, city council managers, city council members, city manager. I'm Mary Ellen Johnson. I am the CEO of the Youth Protection Council, 1226 North Michigan. We provide services for runaways, teen parents. Your block grant and your ESG funding is critically important to our programs. With your dollars, we are able to bring a substantial match from U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and those dollars are essential to keeping the doors open. One of my staff will be joining us in just a minute. I'll speak on behalf of the agency, but that's the work that we're doing. She would like to be here when council started at 6:30, but she had three young kids coming to shelter this evening that needed to have intakes done so that they could be safe. She shared with me that one of the young gentlemen had quite a critical need that he presented, and so, if you see someone walking in as your meeting is progressing, she wanted to be here, but her job needed to be with the kids first. So again, I want to thank you for your support. It is absolutely essential for us to run our shelter that's open 24/7 to house homeless moms, and we're very grateful for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Saginaw. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to address the 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant Program, Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and/or the Home Investment Partnership Program? Yes?
Thank you. Good evening, council, city manager. I just want to thank all of you again. I'm trying to get here every other week to speak, so, no. I want to thank everybody in this community and everyone in this crowd. This is a great town. I love this town. We're trying to do the best we can in the areas we're at to help these children. We're making a difference. Oh, John Vowell, 2542 North Oakley. Thank you. And just want to say that we're having a blast out there with Major Courts for Minors. I know your jobs are very difficult. Wow, my hat goes off several times to you, but I see a bump in the road, or not a bump in the road, but a bump in Saginaw that's making a difference here that I have not seen in 30 years. I see something happening. I can't tell you what that is, but it's the first positive movement I've seen out of this community in a long, long time. And I just want to thank you from Major Courts for Minors for your support and continued support. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to address any of the three grant programs? Third and final time, is there anyone else to address the 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant Program, Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and/or the Home Investment Partnership Program? Being none, I would ask for a motion to close the hearing.
(Inaudible).
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
(Inaudible).
Any opposed? It's carried.
Our next public hearing is regarding the request to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 409 Adams Street.
We would ask, is there anyone to speak to the request to establish the obsolete property rehabilitation district at 409 Adams Street?
I'm here. Good evening, Mayor Browning. Your mayor Browning's not here. Scratch that.[1546.53][1546.53](Laughter).
(Inaudible).
Let's get my pen out and scratch that out. Mayor Pro Tem Clock, council members, Mayor Morales. I was trying to get through this quickly. I know we have a lot of stuff to do today. My name is Tom Miller. I'm with Saginaw Future. I'm here to speak in support of the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act request before you this evening. Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, or OPRA, provides for a tax incentive to encourage the redevelopment of obsolete buildings that are contaminated, blighted, or functionally obsolete. This requires a two-step process. This is the first step, is for council to create an OPRA district, and the second step is to consider the actual application for exemption at a future council meeting. If approved, the OPRA certificate would freeze the property tax for up to 12 years. The OPRA law was enacted to encourage individuals or businesses to rehabilitate buildings, which without new investment might be destined for demolition. Because of the tax cap granting of any new OPRA certificate removes the property from the ad valorem role and creates a new revenue stream for the city of Saginaw. It's usually at this time that I introduce the company so that they can speak about the project, but Alex DePerry, who is the developer, is on his way to Chicago to greet his first grandchild. I'm not sure if it's a boy or a girl. So I said, no worries, the clerk and I can handle it. He was in contact with both of us lately, and Lori Brown's office has been through the property. We took a tour. This is the property on Adams in Michigan, the old Case Funeral Home, which he purchased. He's going to be rehabbing that building and putting 13 market-rate apartments in there. It's going to be in excess of a million dollars. They're still working on cost estimates and elevations and things. They have been to the Historic District Commission for approval. They're going to take part of some of the building off. That was, they were additions later on that are structurally unsound to the building, but the main historic, original building will still be in place. It's another good project for the city. The city manager and I and Yolanda have been working with some consultants to do market study for the city of Saginaw because of all the development that's occurring specifically in the riverfront, both in Old Town and downtown. And in their initial findings, more residential offerings were the first thing that came to mind, seeing that there's demand. The Bancroft and Eddy filled up really quickly. All of the apartments in Old Town are rented, and we're working on a few other housing projects, so this is another good project. I'll be here for questions.
To the obsolete property rehabilitation district at 409 Adams Street. Anyone else to speak to the obsolete property rehabilitation district? Third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the obsolete property rehabilitation district at 409 Adams Street? There being none, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
(Inaudible).
It's been moved and the seconded. Is there a second?
(Inaudible).
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
(Inaudible).
Any opposed? Did you get the first, the motion and second?
(Inaudible). Councilmember Bench. That made the motion, so I've got Millen as the second. Thank you.
Next.
Our final hearing tonight is regarding the urban cooperation agreement with Spalding Township to provide inspection services.
Is there anyone to speak to the urban cooperation agreement with Spalding Township? Yes. We have our own. We have our own.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Clark. John Stumpel, Department of Inspections and Neighborhood Services. The agreement before you tonight, simply a renewal of the existing agreement that we've had with Spalding Township for the past three years. The price remains the same, as well as the services that we provide to them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the urban cooperation agreement with Spalding Township? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the urban cooperation agreement with Spalding Township? For the third and final time, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the urban cooperation agreement with Spalding Township? There being none, I would entertain a motion to close the meeting, the hearing, I'm sorry. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Madam Clerk?
We are now at personal appearances.
Okay. I would like to remind everybody who are going to be speaking at personal appearances that while we welcome your thoughts and inputs, it is important when you come to the podium to introduce yourself and state your home address first. To be helpful, let us know if you'll be speaking solely on your own behalf or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have three minutes, have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points in those three minutes. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all our citizens, we ask you to be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching on SGTV, and to this council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Thank you. Our first one?
Our first speaker is Bob Wagner.
Good evening, esteemed council, city manager. Again, my name is Bob Wagner. I reside in Saginaw Township, but I've been a landlord for approximately 25 years in the city, as well as maintained for the last nine years a real estate broker's office within the city limits. The subject matter that I have is the use of the free dump on the second Saturday of every month. It is an opportunity that I've used and enjoyed. Approximately nine months ago, I was told when I entered the gate that I no longer qualified to use it. So I checked with the individual there. He indicated to me that the reason why you can't use it is that the new guideline is that you cannot use the facilities unless you have a city driver's license. And I says, well, I've been using this since the inception of the program, which is probably close to 10 years if I'm not mistaken. So at that point in time, I left, and over the last nine months, I've had verbal conversation as well as personal meetings with various members of the city to discuss the program, the benefits to you and the benefits to landlords and city residents. If all you need to do is drive by some of the areas and find vacant houses, vacant lots where there's garbage piled up, and it's sitting there, the opportunity to throw it away at your facility is a benefit to both parties. The conversations have led over the last nine months to nothing. Recently, just had a conversation, and I was told to get ahold of another manager, and there have been four messages left for him with no response back to me. At this point in time, if you do not have a city license, whether you own property, one or multiple, you cannot dump. I'm requesting that we review that. We've talked about a win-win situation, establishing a special permit that could be obtained at a cost, a special sticker, maybe presentation of deeds that show that we own properties. As of, again, just a couple of days ago, that has been turned down, or has not been turned down, has not been given any consideration. Basically, in conclusion, I think this is, again, a win-win. Why do you want to have your folks pick the stuff up when you can have residents and landlords take it to your dump? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Alexis Landers.
Good evening, city council members and the city manager. My name is Alexis Landers. I live at 625 Owen Street, Apartment 2, here in the city of Saginaw. I am the community outreach coordinator for the Saginaw Sugar Beats, and I will be speaking on behalf of the Saginaw Sugar Beats. We are a Great Lakes Summer Collegiate League baseball team that is comprised of elite collegiate baseball players from around the country and who play in the Great Lakes Summer Collegiate League. This league is made up of 14 franchises based in Michigan, Indiana, Ohio, and Ontario. Teams play a 42-game regular season during the months of June and July with the playoffs to follow. We at the Saginaw Sugar Beats are looking to grow the game of baseball in our community. We have already formed strong partnerships with Francis Ray, Friends of Hoyt Park, and the Saginaw County Parks and Recreation to bring baseball and softball camps to the city. At Francis Ray, we will be hosting a multi-week baseball camp in the month of March. On June 19th and 20th, we will be hosting a camp at Hoyt Park for youth in grades K through 8. The camp will run from 11 to 3 each day and is free to youth who are registered to play in the Hoyt Youth Baseball League. For youth who are not registered for the Hoyt League, the camp is $20. The Sugar Beats will provide 12 coaches and 32 current collegiate players to direct the camp, a free camp tee-shirt for each youth, and an autograph session with players from the team. We are also in the middle of submitting a proposal to Saginaw City Schools to further our mission of giving youth more opportunities to play and also offer our assistance with, excuse me, our assistance with educational appearances from our staff and players. We look forward to promoting a fun, family atmosphere centered around the game of baseball, and we are confident in our ability to provide high-quality entertainment for the residents of our communities at a very reasonable price. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Larry Brethour.
Part of Friends of Hoyt Park, maybe I wasn't clear, so clear on that. First off, I see some really worthy programs that are being funded by the Community Development Block Grant and Human Planning Commission, if I understood that correctly. We've never applied, and maybe we should. Certainly, we're trying to do worthy things for the youth in Saginaw. I just came today. I'm Larry Brethour. I'm the president of Friends of Hoyt Park. Came to just give you guys an update on how Hoyt Park has been doing. Last summer, we actually ended up with 18 youth teams, over 300 youth, boys and girls from age 4 to 16. So really full. This last winter, we just finished our last one. The weather's turned warm now for the winter events, sledding and skating and outhouse racing. We got four of the five scheduled events in. We had anywhere from 300 to over 1,000 people come each weekend event. So still think it's the tip of the iceberg, but already a good turnout. This year, as was just mentioned by Saginaw Sugar Beats representative, we're going to have, in the past, we had clinics for youth in the spring and in the fall. With the colleges, this year, we're collaborating with Saginaw Sugar Beats, the new wood bat group, like she mentioned. She mentioned the dates already, 19th and 20th of June. And anyone signing up for our Hoyt Park youth baseball, boys and girls, both, age 4 through 17, the clinics are free. Otherwise, it's $20, just like she had mentioned. In front of you, you have handouts that are about the clinic, and also, hopefully, you guys can help get the word out to get the youth and even expand last year's 18 teams into even a bigger event. With me today is Elja Smith. I want to mention him for sure because the diamonds are in the shape they're in, and the park is as beautiful as it is, mainly because of Elja. He's a big, big reason that Hoyt Park is what it is. So that's why he's along. I think I covered it. Thank you.
Speaker is Elja Smith.
Good evening, everyone, city manager and fellow councilmen. My name is Elja Smith, Jr., and I stay at 2227 Whittier Street, Saginaw, Michigan. And I am the guy that, I love what I do, so I am the field supervisor out at Hoyt Park. I do the diamonds, chalk the diamonds, cut the grass. Also, I'm one of the founders of the little league that started Hoyt Park back up. Me and a brother named Chris Packard. And then comes Larry. Larry's the guy that makes me work now. So, but I enjoy it. And we also, I also umpire, but I enjoy doing what I do. But all I'm wanting to say is that of any kind of support to get these kids busy during the summer is what we're about, and this is what I love to do. So if you can give us any support, bring the kids on, we'll work with them, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Oberschmidt.
Good evening, city council. My name is Mark Oberschmidt. I live at 404 South Granger, and I just want to thank Larry Brethour and Alga for the wonderful job they do. Hoyt Park and the Friends of Hoyt Park make such a difference. I was down to the outhouse races last weekend. Also, John Vowell sitting back there with the Major Courts for Minors. Those are two just wonderful outstanding programs I think we have in Saginaw, of people who have just stood up and grabbed the reins and really done a wonderful job and make a difference in Saginaw, and certainly make a difference with their youth. I'm here tonight for a different reason. I'm here tonight because I hear that there is going to be an effort to remove the tax cap. There's an effort by a number of groups to accomplish this, as I've read in the paper. In your message, you try to convey the fact that rent, in your message, please try to convey the fact that if you lift the tax cap, rents will go up. Me being a landlord, I'm just going to recover the difference, unfortunately. Homeowners will have less money to fix up their homes. If you looked at the general disrepair of homes in Saginaw, there certainly could be more money put into the homes in Saginaw. Just let me lay out just a couple of numbers, quick numbers for you. The home in Tidewassee Township where my total mills are, 34. In Saginaw, my total millage is 55 mills. Compared to Saginaw Township, we pay 65% more in millage. Compared to Frankham, we pay 42% more at this point in time, which is substantial. We do not live on 1979 money, as I've heard so many times, supporting the lift of the tax cap. We neither have the number of people we had in 1979 nor the number of buildings. Also, it's been supplemented in many ways. One of the biggest ways I see is I pay $1,400 in winter taxes on the homes I own in Saginaw, yet I pay a $3,600 solid waste bill that I never had in 1979. So I pay two and a half times what my winter taxes are merely to have the trash picked up. It's a huge cost. The water department installed new meters to the savings of Saginaw. You've heard me talk about this before, for a savings of $200,000 a year. More efficient lighting has resulted in other savings of $200,000 a year. Some of the areas of crime, as reported, are down 80% in Saginaw. Police response time, on average, in Saginaw is four minutes. The national average is five minutes. We have a 20% quicker response time at this point than the national average, according to the newspaper. Scare tactics won't work when crime is down. By the thinking of the past, more police were called for when crime was up. Why doesn't less crime compute to the need for no more taxes for not having any more police? Leave the tax caps alone. If you want to work on Saginaw, work on image and quality of life issues. We can only afford what we can afford, not higher taxes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharon Denzie.
My name is Sharon Denzie, 2216 Adams Boulevard. I'm here to represent Go High, Get Outside for Healthy Inside. You have a card that I brought in earlier that you can check that out. A year ago, about this time, we wrote a proposal to the American Planning Association to bring their CPAT, their Community Planning Assistance Teams, to Saginaw. We don't have a planner, and we don't have any money probably to hire one. So they did accept my proposal, and they came in June. Some of you saw them. They were here for two days in June, and now the full team is coming back. We have some outstanding, nationally-ranked planners that will be coming. They will arrive the 28th of February, and we'll have our kickoff a week, March 1st, 6 to 8 o'clock, at the Anderson Enrichment Center. We hope to be able to earn money for revitalization of Wick's Park. Wick's Park is an absolute jewel. The planners are very, very excited to be able to work on this. You all will receive an invitation to come to a specific group. You're always welcome to come to the community kickoff on Thursday, but you will receive an invitation to come to a specific group, and they're staying at the Montague Inn, and those invitations will be for a small focus group at the Montague. Thank you.
With that, we are now at remarks of council.
I'd like to remind council members, there's a five-minute limit for each, and I believe today we begin with Councilwoman Bench.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Clark. Good evening to everyone here tonight and watching at home. First of all, I'd like to thank our public speakers who are here tonight, Mr. Brethour, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Landers. Thank you very much for everything you guys do all year round over with Friends of Hoyt Park. We're very fortunate to have such a jewel there in all the activities that you guys host and put together, and it's fantastic to hear about the Sugar Beats and what an opportunity that'll be for some of our young people. Ms. Denzie, thank you. You've been at this forever, and you don't give up, and you continue to come back and bring us good news, and I am glad to see you are still at it. So thank you for all you're doing as well. To our Human Planning Commission, thank you for all of your hard work and the thoughtful effort that goes into figuring out who gets what and with an ever-dwindling amount of money. So we know it's not an easy job, but thank you for doing it. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. See if I can squeeze this in, but just like to thank the members of the Human Planning It appears that council get a disproportionate amount of accolades as far as some of the work, I think, as far as the benefit to the city. All the boards and commissions do a great job, but most of the questions I get are dealing with the Human Planning Commission. So I thank you for your volunteer and your services to the city, because what you do definitely has a tremendous impact on the city, and without your service, it just wouldn't get done. So thank you. And it's just as important, such as the zoning board, I get a lot of questions for, the SEDC Committee, Riverfront Development. Not to take anything from my co-councilperson down there who leads that, but I appreciate the work you've done. Mr. Wagner, I definitely agree with you. The city dumping site is definitely a win-win. I'm just a council member, but I believe management is looking at maybe doing some things differently there because it is a popular service, and you're totally correct as far as having that junk or trash be able to manage in that way and be able to get rid of it and not being dumped in Wick's or some other parks. I'm totally in favor of extending that service to what you're asking. Sugar Beats, I want to thank you for your service and your commitment to the city. It's just another, or extending the breadth of options that our residents have and actually the county has in coming to the city and being active in the city, and I want to thank Sugar Beats. Ms. Denzie, thank you for your commitment and your service. I can't wait for the one day where Wick's will be looking similar to Hoyt as far as the number of organized activities that they have there. Friends of, Mr. Brethour, Friends of Hoyt Park, Mr. Smith, you're a great example of what of what the city needs as far as a residence, um, taking some initiative and, um, as far as having an idea of what you want the parks to offer to as residents and, uh, meeting the city halfway, even maybe even three-quarters of the way. Um, and that's the type of, uh, commitment and, uh, service, uh, the city needs and to provide the services that you do. Uh, I guess my last thing I want to touch upon is the, uh, the ordinance that is on the, uh, commission, or excuse me, on the agenda today. And one of the questions I received most about it as far as what businesses it will impact, and majority of the businesses, it will not affect at all. Uh, believe what was told to me that it will probably impact maybe eighty-five of the businesses, establishments here in the city. Um, and generally, those businesses have a disproportionate amount of, uh, criminal activity there. Um, I find that, uh, the ordinance is proportional. Um, as I said, it only impacts eighty-five of businesses here. It's cost-effective. It's a small investment, uh, that some of these businesses will put in the city. We're just asking for a three-hundred, to a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar investment to make your customers safer, uh, your employees safer, and the city safer. I think it's very practical. Uh, there's one instance where a local store, uh, there was shooting there, absolutely, positively no witnesses were cooperative, including store employees. But it's because of the video, we were able to put the person who was responsible for the shooting behind bars. If not for video, uh, the recent assault of the sixty-five-year-old, who knows what else could have happened if not for the police using the video to get the face out there and for residents to respond so quickly. So it's, it's just, it's, it's just something that, it's a very small practical investment for the city, which should benefit the city in the long term. Comparatively, Clinton Township, which has a one-hundred-thousand residents, they have a similar ordinance. Uh, this is a small part of what Detroit is doing with the Green Light Program. And that particular program, they're expand, they're making all, all businesses that opens after ten P.M., um, have this particular type of surveillance video. So I believe the city and the management is pretty attuned as to not be very, uh, what is it, uh, burdensome to businesses because we need businesses to thrive in the city. Uh, so I believe it's proportional and I think it's going to be very effective. Um, anything we can do to help, uh, solve crimes, and it's just not violent crimes. Unfortunately, a lot of these parks, or excuse me, the, uh, uh, the parking at these places are for drug trafficking, which we know it's definitely impacts the quality of life in our city. That should definitely assist in that problem. So, uh, it totally has my support one-hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Clock. First, I just want to echo everyone who's spoken before me, thank the speakers for all coming tonight. And I definitely want to echo the thanks to the Human Planning Commission. Months of hard work has gone into their deliberations and their presentation tonight. Quick mention of an event coming up this week, the Can Council Mardi Gras Night is Thursday, February twenty-second. That's at the Horizon Center and the doors open at five-thirty. Please check with the Can Council on North Michigan for tickets. I do not know if they are available at the door. And, uh, this is their big fundraiser for the year. Uh, this past week, I had a chance to visit with the Saginaw County 911 Authority. Uh, that was hosted by Director Randy Fow. And I got a great tour of their facility and go over their operations with them. And I wanted to pass along, he particularly thanked our head of our inspections and Neighborhood Services, John Stempel, for his quick, uh, working with him when they, they get a call that impacts areas he's involved with. And, uh, just to point out how much their operations affect the city here, of the approximately half dozen desks they have for the nine-one-one operation, two of them are dedicated to city operations, city fire and city police, and they handle those first and then take other nine-one-one calls. So we are very much, uh, working closely with them on everything they do. Uh, a couple of the speakers, in two different ways, mentioned the, uh, operations of the convenience station. And I would like to ask the manager for some additional feedback on that from staff. Uh, I'm a frequent user of it myself and my recollection is that at one time it was based on a number of different identifiers. You could have a city addressed utility bill, uh, either consumers or water. And it would appear that if the payment of the solid waste fee is to the, uh, from the landlord, if, as the owner of the property, we would want to have a way they could access that. If for no other reason than, and I've seen this numerous times, landlords are forced in the position of doing, uh, an eviction and they are left with a large amount of debris, trash, furniture, and it is not possible to move that into their regular waste stream on the curb. And so I would, uh, want to see that they have access to something that helps them complete their job. So, um, that's my comments for the evening.
I will pass.
Well, I will take his time up if it's allowable.
Well, I'd like to say it works that way, but it doesn't.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that's doing great things for the city of Saginaw. Uh, with the volunteers, I don't think Saginaw would be what it's, is or what it can be. And I really appreciate all, everything everybody's doing, uh, from the music to the kids playing baseball. You got two people here for, uh, get the kids involved in baseball. I'm a, uh, Little Leaguer from Hoyt Park myself, from nine to thirteen years old, and I think it helped, it produced a pretty good guy, I think. Um, I got a letter here on another note, from a, a person who used to be a mayor here, Gary Loester. And he wrote a letter and he sent me a copy of this letter that he sent into the Honorable Rex Tillerson, Secretary of State, talking about the statements that, uh, the President of the United States made about, uh, uh, S-H-I-T whole countries. And he's extremely, uh, teed about it, that's why he sent this letter to, uh, Mr. Tillerson. And I wanted to express my views on the letter, uh, considering the fact, uh, this is Black History Month, African-Americans have, uh, after giving up three-hundred years of, uh, free labor, uh, only for women board, that we still came here and, and, and we still say our prayers at night and ask God to forgive our debtors for the things that they did at us, and we still trying to make this country a great place to live in. And we don't think that someone should be saying that. If, if I was, uh, if I voted for somebody and they did something I don't like, I think I'll tell them about it. And I don't think enough people are telling him the things that he need to be, uh, he need to know about offending people like that. Especially when you come back in the same statement and say, why are we not bringing people here from Norway? In the same statement, I mean, that's just, we don't, we don't need a country like that. We trying to do some positive things here in the city of Saginaw. We don't need to wake up to evil people to let them get involved in those types of situations. So I just wanted to mention that, especially during the, uh, Black History Month. We got a lot of things that we would like to improve here in the city of Saginaw. I want to be part of that. I am part of it. And I want to help bring some things that are positive for everybody in the city of Saginaw. So if anybody else could, uh, maybe they should, uh, send a letter to Mr. Tillerson too and let them know how they feel, or Mr. Trump. And I'd like to, uh, thank everybody again for the positive things that you do in the city of Saginaw. Keep up the good work. And thank you, thank you, thank you for making that donation to the Big Brothers and Sisters Program. Uh, uh, I've been in the program for thirty, going on thirty-one years. Uh, I have six little brothers. Right now, I got two, uh, due to the fact that one of them leaving me. Uh, he got a girlfriend and he's planning on going to college and, uh, matter of fact, he's planning on working at a, cooperating at a credit union that I'm on the Board of Directors of. So I'm, I'm just looking forward to helping somebody else out so that they can help somebody else out. Then maybe we can have people doing less crime. Neither one of my little brothers has got involved in the police system. One of them, he was close. Uh, the police, uh, gave him a wedgie and sent him on his way and he ain't given nothing bad since. So, um, it, the program do work. If anybody here want to help the city of Saginaw out, get involved in a young kid's life. I guarantee it'll help turn him around. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Valls.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Clock. Uh, good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us. I know we have quite a packed agenda, so, uh, I'll try to be as brief as possible. Just want to say thank you to, uh, the city staff. I had a quite a busy week, uh, with the manager's staff this week with Ms. Brown and Ms. Mason. Thank you guys so much for, uh, making that time. Uh, again, nobody up on here, uh, we don't have PhDs, especially when it comes to things like engineering and water services, and they were able to explain, uh, some things to me. So definitely thank you guys all so much, uh, for making that time. Uh, we had a great weekend in the city of Saginaw. We had many events. Uh, I want to commend my councilwoman, Councilwoman Moore, who sits on the board of CAC for a very successful Walk for Warmth this season. Congratulations, Councilwoman Moore. It was a little bit chilly, but it was a great day to get out there and support a very worthy cause. Uh, also, I just want to let you know that we are starting, uh, planning for Beautification Day two thousand and eighteen. Uh, that meeting is going to be held this Thursday, so thank you, Councilwoman Mill, but I will not be able to attend, uh, the event for the Can Council, but I did, uh, contribute a very nice, uh, auction gift, so if you go, you have to purchase that. Uh, but, uh, in addition to that, I also got a chance, uh, last Friday to ride the plow. It's one of the things that I wanted to do, uh, keeping, uh, we think of public safety, uh, with just police and fire, but also our road and streets crew has a lot to do with that as well. So we want to give them major kudos and encourage my colleagues. If you ever want to go on a ride, the manager made that happen in about, uh, five minutes. Also, thank you to, uh, Ms. Vicki and our intern Ivy for doing such a great job on, uh, social media. We really want to get the message out about the city of Saginaw, all the positive things that are happening. And one of the, uh, most, I guess you could say it's almost free, uses of social media. And we get inundated, uh, a lot as council people and as citizens where we have to defend our city. And I did engage in a little bit of social media wars, uh, regarding the incident that we had at the United Way Building. Uh, and I want to make sure, I want to challenge our citizens tonight that that's not, that's not who we are. Those isolated incidents that may happen, uh, pop up, that does not speak to the spirit of our city. So, uh, I know United Way has, uh, many items, uh, that are available for purchase, uh, and also the Red Association would definitely, uh, appreciate any kind of contribution or signing up as well. But I think that's the, the most appropriate way to respond because that is not, um, as I said before, that does not speak to the spirit, uh, of our city. Thank you much, thank you so much to all of our public speakers, uh, and I assure you those that need management follow-up, uh, that will happen. Uh, but I did want to say a special thank you to the Human Planning Commission for the work that you guys do put in. Uh, I was not able to get there this session. I had caught that crud and I was down, uh, but some of my colleagues who were there definitely filled me in and I want to thank you, looked over the notes and, uh, your message definitely, uh, I've received that. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank all of our public speakers. I'm sure that the city manager will get with you and he will get us to respond back. For the Human Planning Committee, you know I love you. You know, I didn't make it to every meeting, but I did make it to the major ones that I need to make it to. Um, they are a real dedicated group and they asked the tough questions while I was there. And they asked the questions that really made you think about, are we putting our money in the right spot? And they did that. So my hat goes off to you. Um, this week has really been a busy week for the last two weeks. Uh, as my colleague said, um, I participated in a walk, the city did, for Walk for Warmth. So I'm going to shoot some numbers out to people. Saginaw, Saginaw Community Action Center, we have funds available right now for individuals to help pay their consumer power bill. The number's nine-eight-nine, two-eight-two, two thousand. Anyone that wants or needs help or assistance in paying for their consumer bills, we have funds available right now. We did the Walk for Warmth on Saturday. That was to help individuals whose income was, may have been a little above the poverty line. So we do have funds available for what we call Delivable Fuel, for people that live in our county. Keep in mind, this is not just Saginaw City, it's Saginaw County. Birch Run, Chestening, Hemlock, all of the individuals out there are eligible. Um, we are going to continue, to continue to try to come up with resources so that we can help individuals pay their heat bills. I've been, my phone has been blowing up. Oh, my phone, my consumers went up four times. Okay, call this number, call this number. We may not be able to pay the whole thing, but we should be able to help you at least get you situated. On this coming Friday, First Walk Community Center will have their Taste of Soul and it's a yearly thing they do during Black History Month. I encourage all citizens to come. It is a gala event and we just eat lunch from eleven to one-thirty. I will be serving. So please don't make me mad because I might accidentally spill. I'm just joking. I'm just joking. I'd like to see the community come out and support that activity. We're just getting geared up for things that are getting ready to happen. The weather is changing. I'm encouraging all citizens, if you have or know of elderly people, check on them. Check on them this, during the rest of this season. A lot of elderly are coming up and young people as well with their flu bug. And they don't, you know, they may not ask you, but I know that I've been going to my neighborhood and I've really been checking on my community people because that bothers me, especially when we talk about conserving energy. It's been cold. We can't conserve our energy. Let's be honest. Let's be honest. So they keep their heater on sixty-two, you can blow smoke in their house. And I just tell them to cut it up, cut it up. Whatever we can do to help them pay that bill, we plan to do it. So with that, I appreciate everybody. Thank you so much. I'm done, sir.
I have a few. I want to mention, you heard Kevin Washburn today, and I think you all got quite a taste of what Saginaw Coral Society can do. The reason I asked him to be here today was, many of you have seen the sign, Get Ready Saginaw, on the Court Street Theater, right? Well, the Coral Society is going to be helping them open on March seventeenth and, uh, for their concert, next concert, and on April fourteenth, they will be having a concert those two days at the Court Street Theater. So what better opportunity to support your, one of your two local theaters here in town? We always say, "By Saginaw," you know? So support your local theater. Let's all, uh, help the Court Street Theater get off on the right foot because it'd be really nice to have that back for Saginaw. That's why he was here and I thought he did a great job. Next, um, regarding the block grant, I, no one, none of us can say enough about what the Human Planning Commission does. I do want to mention that I think there's a, uh, space for several more people to be appointed to the commission. You probably are down seven or eight positions, correct? I think that's what it is. So we would encourage anyone who has an interest in any of the things that the Planning, Planning Commission, uh, does to, um, to apply and to the city for the position. That does bring up one other thing, uh, as you see, as was mentioned by Mr. Langoria today, there are some new grants requests that came in. And in looking at the process, I was sort of surprised, council, to see that, I didn't see any, I don't see any council policy guidelines regarding what we want. I think the commission is doing a great job, but I think it might be a good idea to look into what we want to do. So I've asked the manager to, uh, create a committee, uh, that is looking into guidelines for this council, policy guidelines for the Planning Commission regarding the grants. Um, and I would ask one or two council members to consider being on that with myself, the manager, and a few other staff. So if you're interested, let myself or the manager know, if you would, please. For anybody out there who has a flagpole that's too vacant, you see the Saginaw flag up here? There's, the city manager's office has city flags on sale for sixty dollars. So if you are interested, please contact the manager's office. We should be proud of our city and that's one way to show it. Also Saginaw pins, uh, if you have an interest in passing those around, they can be purchased in, in groups or blocks, I think of a hundred or more, more. So it's something they'll talk to myself or the manager about. April nineteenth, all of you, or many of you know I'm, I'm a supporter of the symphony. That is their These Men Can Cook, um, event. Several of our council members, uh, cooked last year and I'd encourage all of them to again, join us. The weird part is I can't be there because I have two events that night. Uh, so I'm The weird part is, I can't be there because I have two events that night, so I'm going to have to choose, and the other one unfortunately is the priority one for me this year. However, I would really encourage council members to be there. It was a great event, we had firefighters there. I've challenged our firefighters again, I've challenged, I am challenging our police department to try and get a couple people cooking, because it's a great event. It supports the Saginaw based Symphony Orchestra, it's a lot of fun, and people enjoy the food. Mr. Wagner, you've got an interesting dilemma that you posed for us, so I hope that we can address it in some way that satisfies you. No promises, but I'm sure that the management will be looking at this. I do think that there is a problem with where the site is now, because it creates a mess. Vehicles get backed up, there's not enough room for the debris that gets brought in, so it is a problem, not only for the landlords and the citizens, but for the city to maintain that. So, please understand, it's not just that you, we're not trying to single you out, we're trying to figure out a way to address a problem for everybody. Everyone else that spoke today, the Friends of Hoyt Park, the Great Lakes Summer Collegiate League, all these are really wonderful, so thank you for all that you do for us. I can and will say, I totally disagree with any negative comments about the cap, tax cap. That cap has to go, it's a disaster for our city, to millions of dollars, the tune of millions and millions of dollars throughout the last 40 years. That's all I have, so. Madam Clerk?
Reports from manager.
Thank you. Few items this evening. First, I'd like to remind everyone of the citywide meeting this Thursday, the 22nd, at 5:30. Southwest Association is hosting, and it's at the Beacon of Hope Church at 2109 West Michigan Avenue, 5:30. And the guest speakers are Carol Summers and Catherine Tesson from the Mid-Michigan Waste Authority. So, it should be a lot of opportunity for question and answer there, if anyone would like to attend. Also, the Neighborhood Association Action Group meeting is tomorrow in council chambers. I noticed on the agenda that Tom Miller Jr. will be providing an economic development update, and also Brian Jackson from the Community Foundation will present the Spring Into Service Program. So, it's a, should be a good meeting there as well. The Mayor Pro Tem, Clark, Councilman Mill, and Councilwoman Moore and I did attend the Saginaw County Courts and Public Safety meeting and the committee of the whole meeting on February 6th. We were invited by the County Board of Commissioners to attend that, where there was an update on the jail proposal project. So, the main takeaway from that, I think, is that they are not going to be building over the street, they are building on all of their currently owned property, which is part of the parking lot, and they did purchase the house on that corner, which made that possible. So, I think that addresses some issues that were brought to public services as well as some council members. Last week, last, or a meeting or two ago, a council member did bring up the MBS Airport Terminal demolition as well, and that is nearly complete. If you go out to the airport, you'll see that building is just about gone now, so it's been up for a long time since the new terminal was put into service, but that's, project is coming to an end, and I think they'll be done with it in the next month or two completely. Regarding the convenience station, that is an issue for us even as is. That site is not big enough, and the expense is fairly significant, just the way that we provide services now. It costs a pretty significant amount of money, and the use that it does get now, I think, ties up a lot of that staff, or in excess of a week to two weeks, just based upon the amount of debris that is dropped off there. Even the way that it is now, I think is much more than most communities do. If you ever look at what other communities do, they, they don't normally have a one day a month drop-off time. A lot of communities have one day a year where you can drop off large items. So, I think it is a good service for residents, but at this time, I don't know if there's a possibility to expand it, and since I've been with the city and I checked with Mr. Carwatt, who's been here longer, you have had to be a city resident to utilize that drop-off station. So, if it has been used without being requested, then it was used a little bit beyond what the rules have been, so it was, but that is the rule. Also, Mayor Pro Tem, Clark did talk a little bit about addressing some of the comments that were made about the tax cap, and our role as city administration is we want to make sure that the facts are known about these things, so when I hear things that aren't true, I just also have to comment. One thing that wasn't mentioned in the address to council was the high legacy costs that we also have now, and I think anybody on council or in the city can, who's been in the city for any length of time can tell you that you're paying your taxes, but we, look how much recreation has been cut, which we can see from the individuals who work at Hoyt Park. Those used to be run through city dollars. We used to have a wave pool, we used to have a water slide. Those things all went away because of the lack of funds. It wasn't because, it was something that we did not want to administer any longer. We do have fewer police officers. As was mentioned, crime is down, but our calls haven't gone down. Chief can tell you how many calls we respond to. We respond to the same number of calls with 55 that we did 105, so that it doesn't always decrease the need, but again, the legacy costs that we're paying are very significant too, so it's not as simple as sometimes people may think it is. For all of our committees and all of our volunteers, like Friends of Hoyt Park and the HPC, I think they all do great work, and as council members know, it's difficult to staff all of those committees. We oftentimes have to recruit, and as Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, we have vacant spots on the Human Planning Commission. I think we have some on the Historic District Commission. We do have, I think, at least one or two on the Planning Commission. So, it is, it is difficult to staff those, so we do thank everybody who participates in those, from Riverfront Commission, Councilman Bryant does a lot of work with that, and the DDA and so on. So, I think all of the committees that do work and all the volunteers that work on our parks and the YPC, the shelter that they run is a significant need for not only the city, but the region, and all the way through major courts for minors. A lot of groups do great work. So, with the, the block grant allocations, I did provide to you the line item and the, it shows the previous year's allocations and the Human Planning Commission recommendation, the city manager's proposed budget. The category allocations that I've made are the same recommendations as the Planning Commission for Housing, Public Facilities, Economic Development, Public Services, Administration, Emergency Shelter, and the home, the dollar amount has changed, the, or is the same, the only change that I made was within public services, in my budget, I did increase the community policing program by $6,000, and that funding, I did move from the new public services. The four new programs at the bottom decreased by the same percentage. They're all still funded at a rate of about, I think, 70, 73 or 74% of what the recommendations were. My reasoning for that was something that Mayor Pro Tem mentioned about the, the goals of council, and one of the top issues for council is crime and public safety. So, with the $6,000 additional allocation at policing, that will fund two community police officers at a rate of 84%. And part of that was, I wanted to somewhat stabilize that police department, community policing prevention program was decreased last year in the funding by about $26,000 and was slated for another decrease of about the same amount this year. In 2016, 2017, the funding did fund 2.3 officers, and then last year's funding funded about two officers, so hopefully, I would like to stabilize that at that amount. And something to do with, with this funding that Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, that he talked to me about, was setting up a committee for council, and I think that's a good idea too, and I would like to be on that committee. Actually, he told me I would be on that committee, so I think, I think I have to be, but I would also ask that Ms. Jones be on the committee as the, she oversees that department, and also would like her to recommend any other staff members that are familiar with these programs, so we make sure that we're not in any conflict with rules that HUD may have for this funding as well. Suggestions that I would have, and I talked to the Mayor Pro Tem about, and the mayor about last week before he left, is measurables, duplication of programs, administration costs, and the council's goals and objectives. So, I think those are some things we should talk about. And also have more council interaction, especially between the chair, Mr. Longoria, and this committee, so that you can get an idea about what, what the commission is thinking as well. So, I'd recommend all of those things, and I think something that we can put together in the next few weeks, and also, I think perhaps additional updates that I did talk to the chair about with some of these programs, like if there are issues with the program itself, they should probably appear to the Planning Commission and talk through those issues as they move forward, so that when they give their brief presentation, they've already talked about some of the issues, and it's not something that you need to engage in in that short period of time that they have. So, I think there are some things that we can do here to make the process easier for all parties involved. And with that, that concludes the management update.
We are at the consent agenda.
I would remind, I would be asking, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yes.
Hold off on that, let Councilwoman Moore go first then.
I just wanted to know, they allocated some money for tiny homes, is that right? I'd like to know who's building those homes and how many we're going to get for $100,000.
I'm going to have Mr. Stempel come up, that's his project that he presented to the Plan, Human Planning Commission. I think it's something new this year, so, John?
Good evening again, city council. We're not building tiny homes, because I'm short either, Mr. Councilman Balls. I had to get to that before you did. It is a new program. We think we can build one house for about $50,000. A lot of it is still in the planning stages, obviously determining locations for this is an important part of it. We are working with a couple of other agencies that are interested in providing significant matching funds toward the program, so we don't just end up with a small three-house development. Obviously, anything that we do with federal, local funds is subject to our purchasing ordinance, and, you know, we'll have to follow the bidding requirements as far as that goes when we hire someone to provide the construction of these. We are also looking at, we have three licensed builders that work within the inspections department's staff, and part of their job currently is to manage housing rehabs under the same program, so we do have some construction management experience within our office, so we may possibly do the management of it ourselves.
I'm familiar with the tiny homes, and a lot of people have tiny home communities, you know, and I was hoping that maybe we can, you know, grab a couple of blocks and put tiny homes in a whole couple of city blocks or something like that, so. Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Not to you, not to you, John. Not that I don't want to talk to you. It's not that I don't want to talk to you, sweetie, it's like talking to you. City manager, all of us get a handbook from the Planning Commission on every group. I tried to attend the ones that are important, that I'm really concerned with. This year, a lot of stuff was going on, I couldn't make it to all of them. I guess, I just, not so much to you, I'm going to challenge the other council people to come to those sessions, because when I, when I'm in there with the group, the group is really, I think they've answered a lot of their questions before, but they actually get in there and they are in-depth on what they're asking. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, I want to be on that committee, because I want to make sure that we are doing the right thing, especially when it comes to a committee who takes out, because that's not no two-minute thing that they do. I've been in their sessions where they be like, okay, let's get them some money, let's get them some money, and I mean, they are really going back and forth, so I just wanted my colleagues to know that. I need your, I need y'all to come out and help too. You know, you talk about what we need to do, we need to go to the meetings when they're having the sessions, so we can hear for ourselves as well. So, I'm encouraging all of us to come to the meeting. Don't just look at that book, because the book is this thick. I mean, so that's a lot of reading, so next year, if we can, with our recommendations, if that's what we're going to do, I'd like to see some of us just, we don't talk, okay? Let me clear the air. We don't talk, we just listen. We listen to the presenters. So, if the fellow, so if my fellow council members ask me about any group that I've heard, I can tell them what I heard, how the group was, and how they presented, so I'm just challenging, I needed to put that out there.
Any other comments or questions?
I think that's something we can add in our zoning, but I think it would be kind of a, moving towards something that is, is becoming more popular, if you did have a few blocks dedicated to this type of development, but also, I think, if we open it up like that, then it gives us a better, a mix in our community, and if we're building some of these houses through our block grant program, we can have, I know there are professors at SVSU and Delta College that are interested in building these homes, have contacted about the city, but they should be, they should be living in the same area and developing a diverse community. So, I think that's a great point and a good idea, and I think we'll move forward with that, Councilman. I think Councilwoman Moore is correct too about attending these meetings. I'd encourage council members to attend any of our boards and commission meetings that you can attend, because it, all of them are a lot of work from the, our regular Planning Commission. We know we've had a lot of items come up this year from the Planning Commission, so we've had a lot of questions. Councilman Bryant sits on that, but it is, they all do a lot of work, so I would encourage you to do that, and I think there should be, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and I have talked about more contact with council members and all of those committees, so that we can set the same kind of goals that council has with the committee, so appreciate that comment, Councilwoman.
Also, I would be interested to hear about that, size of units, and especially whether these would be being built as owner occupied, or some of them would be available as rentals.
Any other comments? I do know that we're working on the form-based zoning. Can I ask Mr. Manager if that is included in there, or is that something we should be asking them to include in there?
Separate issue, because this is, this form-based zoning affects basically the Riverfront District, downtown and Old Town, so this, this would be more within the neighborhood, and we'll have to let John deal with that. It may be more in with our building codes and zoning, so we'll see how that, that works out. Something that he'll, I assume after these allocations, he'll get a little bit more in-depth in, but I think the overall idea of having, you know, a specified area where we can do this kind of project and make the, make the property available for other people who are interested in building, I think is a great idea. interested in building, I think, is a great idea, whether it involves changing a zoning or the building codes, or I believe at John's program, the square footage is already allowable under our current codes, or would you have to change that, John?
Home in the city, which is a little bit bigger than what tiny homes typically are, but there's some other things that we want to incorporate as well into those, the design characteristics, and, you know, incorporating some features that kind of differentiates each one from the other one, so they're not all the same next to each other, as well as the location of where, where they would be.
Moore?
I, I've got a question. I know that you increased and decreased for agencies and put it back in another area, okay? I'd like to have a meeting, or Chief Ruth come in and explain everything that the community policemen do, okay? I have concerns in my neighborhood, and our biggest concern is timeframe when they work, and I just wanna make sure that whatever I'm telling people is accurate. So I'd like for Chief Ruth to come in and explain how it's different, how it's different from the regular police, but yet the same.
In fact, and, you know, some of the changes that we have to be aware of is that four years ago, five years ago, we had, I think, nine. So there was a much broader service level when we had nine. We had five office, five community policing officers that were funded by the federal cops hiring program. So when that grant ended, I believe that was a four-year grant, but it had a fifth-year requirement that we failed to comply with, because we don't have enough general fund money to do that. So those grants have come up again, which would, would allow us to provide better community policing. However, if we know that we can't comply with that final year requirement, it's not an expectation that we want to have. In fact, we shouldn't apply for a federal grant if we know we can't comply with all the grant rules. So there has been a change in, in the way that, that they can provide that service. We still have four. Four is what we have now, and I believe we had probably nine at one time. One is fully funded by the general fund, one is funded by an alternative funding source, and then this last two were funded by the block grant program. So now it will be 1.1, 1.16 funded by the general fund. So there has been a, a change in the service level, and that's why. We also have to keep in mind that any of the officers are still members of POAM, regardless of their assignment, and they're allowed to bid vacations, they're allowed to bid ships, and so on. And I think the ones that do work in there are more flexible, but they, they still have those union rights that, that any other officer has. So I, I will, I'm sure Chief would be glad to give that presentation to council. Maybe something we can do during the budget process, even.
Since everybody knows, I understand that we went from nine to four. So with the change, then maybe we need to tell the community what the expectations is of them, because right now, I'm still thinking about the nine, and we don't have the nine. So I'm saying if we can just enlighten our community or our residents, then they understand the need, and that it's not like it was when we had nine, so I'm just requesting it.
One-sixth of the general fund, two from block grant. Where's the other portion come from?
The other portion is from water funding. For the patrol around there, now they, they fund part of the officer.
Uh, Count, uh, Madam. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV, channel 191. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk? Any exceptions? Last time, any exceptions? There being none, can we, I, I'd ask for all those who favor the, the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Well, it's carried.
We are reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
We need a motion to approve items one, two, through three, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Are there any, it's carried. Are there any other reports of city boards and commissions? Any other reports? Well, there being none, Madam Clerk?
We are at consideration of passing of ordinances. Our first one is to amend section 99.11, traffic control and safety requirements of chapter 99, special events of Title IX general regulations.
Motion to adopt? Is, there's, been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Next.
Our second ordinance is to add chapter 117, business establishments of Title XI business regulations.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Councilman Milne.
Tim, Mr. Manager. In reading this ordinance, I'm interested to know how we envision the enforcement on the inspection part through the police department. Is this going to require additional funding? Is it expected to be handled through our expected funding in the next budget?
It, it won't require additional funding, so Chief has a plan to enforce it, and I believe it will be through the sergeants, and the clerk's office will also be responsible for ensuring that they're done.
If we have a plan in place, it's not gonna include any additional funding whatsoever, but it's just gonna...
...to work for the employees that we already have. Anytime we put a program in place, it takes more work. So this will be a joint effort between the clerk's office, who, who handles the licensing, and the police department. The individuals that have the businesses will receive a certificate from the police department when they have been approved for their lighting and for their camera system. What, they can use that certificate, they have to put it in their business. At that point, the clerk will issue a license to them, if they qualify under all other requirements for that license. But we do have a process in place. There's a few more bugs we have to work out of it, but I think it'll run rather smoothly once it gets in place. I think that the extra work that we're doing is, is, is far outweighed by the, the quality of work we're gonna get in the end on the way we'll be able to solve cases. It's really gonna help us, the cameras. It, it will, yes. It's, it's gonna make Saginaw a safer place. That's all it is.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Madam Clerk?
Resolutions. Our first one is to approve the home program submission program for 2018, 2019.
Need a motion to adopt? It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Carried.
Our second resolution is the homeless assistance program, emergency solutions grant submission program.
Need a motion to adopt? All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Councilman Balls.
Do we have to go through each resolution? If we can't do, pull the ones out we don't wanna speak to? Okay. Thank you.
Any discussion on the homeless assistance program, emergency solutions grant submission? No discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried.
Our next resolution is to approve the community development block grant program submission program, year for 2018, 2019.
Need a motion to adopt? It's moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried.
Our next resolution is to approve the request from Liquid Living LLC, located at 118 North Michigan Avenue, to permit the service of alcohol, alcoholic beverages on public property.
Need a motion to adopt? It's been moved, and is there support? Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? It's carried. Next.
A resolution to approve the request from Liquid Living LLC, located at 118 North Michigan Avenue, for outdoor service to be held in conjunction with the 2018 Class C licensed business.
Need a motion to adopt? It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Next.
Resolution to ratify the extension of the agreement with Mid Michigan Waste Authority and Resource Recovery Systems LLC.
Need a motion to adopt? It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
And our final resolution is to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district at 409 Adams Street.
Need a motion to adopt? It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
We are at motions and miscellaneous business.
All right. Is there any miscellaneous business, or any other motions of any kind by council members? Any motions or miscellaneous? Need a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and supported. All in favor? Any opposed? Carried. We are adjourned.